Order, everyone rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance. To the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, visible with liberty and justice for all. Lisa roll call please.
Kriebel?
Here.
Mr. Langraff?
Here.
Mayor Holtzman?
Here.
Pursuant to the open public's meeting, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the law. For anyone out in the public, we do a workshop portion, then we go right into our regular meeting where we vote on what we're going to discuss. In the beginning, we do not have any presentations. As far as I know, we do not have any department head reports, we have no capital discussions. We will be voting on minutes from March twenty fifth, regular and executive session. We do not have any ordinances to introduce tonight. Nor do we have any public hearing slash adoptions of ordinances. We do have a list of resolutions that we will, the commission will vote by consent and I'll go through each one. The first one is twenty twenty dash one thirty four, authorizing the hiring of um three employees as temporary. E E M Ts for the city of Vettner. We did this last year with Covid and I think we all thought that it was an added. Plus to uh the city of Vettner and the residents as well as the um visitors. Anybody have anything to say about that?
Just one question, did we have four last year?
Last year we had four, this year we have, we we scaled down to three because.
I remember our conversations about it going down to three because we think we can cover it with just one guy on at a time.
Right, plus a lot, uh several of our um. Beach patrol um are E M Ts and certified as well, so.
Right.
I would just add that it was very successful and I think it was a great uh uh addition to the beach patrol. Maybe we need to put a little signage up for the ATV so that they have a area that they can stage under the pier. There was a little bit of. If that's the plan, there's a little bit of co- of a conflict about people that like to sit under the pier and. Our 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 E M Ts kind of should have uh first dibs on the that location so that they can go east or west. I see the smirk on. Chief Cahill's was part of those conversations when we had to fight off some beachgoers for uh for public safety's needs first.
Public Works put up signage, Commissioner, we're we're ready to go in our area.
Excellent.
For the pass through or for?
No, it's for an area up in the hot sand that they could stage under the pier out of the sun. Uh someone came up to them and told them that was their spot and they had to move.
A couple times. It was all summer long, so but anyway, as long as we're, as long as we stake it out and they can be uh and they can, they can, uh we had one guy. Uh we had two, one going in each direction, but I think in this case we just have one, so he's gonna need to be centrally located.
Okay.
Something where we could possibly just put up a temporary structure for it, a tent? I don't, I don't even think it needs a commission.
I didn't know how big of an issue it was, so. Thank you.
Okay, we're good. Moving on, the next resolution is twenty twenty one dash one thirty five. This is um adopting the Atlantic County's uh multi-jurisdictional natural. Hazard mitigation plan second update. I have all my notes uh after reading the the backup. To either ask Chief Cahill or Ed Stinson to jump in and give me a brief. Snapshot of exactly what this is.
Um this is a countywide uh and statewide of and hopefully funded. Uh program where if we come up with a list of things that need to be mitigated to stop flooding. To stop issues that occur because of its location or how it's built. If we come up with a plan and a fu- and a cost for it and money becomes available, we jump to the top of the list. It's basically mitigating, attempting to mitigate hazards before another sandy event. Like we did with the generators on buildings and we waterproofed certain buildings and raised elevations in homes and such. It's the same type of thing, we're we're required to do it if we want the funding when it becomes available.
Great, thank you.
Basically, Ed Ed has a long list. Um that we've discussed that he's going to put the paperwork together to put in for this.
Okay, thank you.
What we gotta do is get one to make it well worth our while.
Wonderful, okay. Next resolution is twenty twenty one dash one thirty six. It's authorizing the city of Vettner to sell one nineteen eighty seven Ford fire apparatus to the city of Atlantic City. Which has been deemed no longer needed for the public use for the amount of a dollar.
Mayor, that that should be pulled.
I'm sorry, yes.
That is what?
That should be pulled.
It's being pulled, okay. Well, no one told me that, so. We will pull that off. Next resolution is twenty twenty one dash one thirty seven. The submission of an application for the fiscal grant cycle. July one twenty one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. This, the the that is a state fiscal year and that is because it's a state-funded grant, the municipal. Uh Drug and Alcohol Alliance, I know that, and what this does is this is for drug and alcohol awareness. I know we were drastically cut this year uh due to um other expenses with Covid. But they still have some money to be able to hopefully do some programs to the public. Okay, okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, next is resolution twenty twenty one dash one thirty eight, and that's authorizing a refund of a tax overpayment. I think that's self-explanatory. The next is twenty twenty one dash one thirty nine. It's authorizing no parking and suspension of open containers during concerts from Memorial Day to Labor Day. And the timeframe is three P M to ten P M. And this involves the one hundred block of New Haven, one hundred block of Newport and Ski Beach. There will be, from based on what I'm reading, that liquor will be, can be purchased by the approved vendors, am I correct?
That's my understanding. We we've hired, we've contracted with one of our local licensed. Facilities to kind of have a beer garden there, is that my understanding?
That's, that's what I was reading, so.
Yes, that's correct.
And that's why the open uh container were suspended that.
That's correct.
Okay.
Just for those events, just for those notes.
Gotcha, okay. Next is resolution twenty twenty one dash one forty, and that is authorizing. Uh an amendment to our twenty twenty one temporary budget. To allow us to spend up to thirty five percent. Originally, at the beginning of the year, we do twenty five percent. And until it's uh finally approved, we have to up the spending because we're now into April. If Al Stanley's out there, am I correct or am I not correct?
You're you're totally correct. It's basically just to sup- to hold us over until we can adopt our actual budget.
Thank you. Next is twenty twenty one dash one forty one, and that's authorizing a change order. Number two, the final for reconstruction of Hampshire Drive. And it looked like it was only in the amount of two hundred and eighty seven dollars and sixty cents. And I must say, that street is absolutely beautiful. The Blasio, um they did an excellent job. Anybody have anything to say about that? Nope, okay. Next is twenty twenty one dash one forty two. And this is a contract with Revenue Guard Medical Claims Management LLC to provide ambulance billing services. For the term of May one twenty twenty one to April thirtieth, twenty twenty two. My question for um. Chief Cahill, uh Al, do, I know we've had issues with several companies. This is a new company, do we have a track record? With this comp- is there a track record? Do they have good stats? Are we gonna get the money that's due to the city with this company since other companies had failed us?
We had the company come in for a demonstration to with um with myself, uh Mike Cahill. And uh the rest of the fire department, they they have all, they brought their references with them, they have clients. They actually have an actual building, we're an office building with staff. And uh we, I feel confident in the company. I can't speak for Mike Cahill. From our demonstration, I feel confident that they they could do the work that is required.
Are they a New Jersey co- company?
Correct, they're from uh central Jersey, Monmouth County area, that's based out of.
Do they have other municipalities?
Yes, they do.
Okay, can you do me a favor? We will prove it, but can you do me a favor and just do a random of their clients and pick three and? Get some feedback from them?
I certainly can, sure I can.
Thank you. Next is resolution. Next is resolution twenty twenty one dash one forty three, and that is approving the rate charges and fees for the year of twenty twenty one. For our rec program. I did have a question about the sport camp had a slight increase as where other ones didn't, but I understand why now. Um you know, we have certain staffing in there uh and we have to have the staffing there for the amount of children. So I'm okay with that, if the commissioners are okay with the new schedule.
Yeah, I, your question was a good one, Mayor, and it's the only thing we increased really significantly.
Right.
Good, good answer, thank you.
A sibling discount for the, for that.
Yes, I did see that, I saw the sibling discount. It just stuck out noticing that that was increased, but surf tennis, uh they were not, but.
Right.
I reached out to Marie today and I understand why, so we're good. Next is twenty twenty one dash one forty four, and that's awarding a contract to J and J Power. To provide pressure washing services to the exterior of the Vettner City Library, not to exceed fifty seven fifty. We all know that's well needed, I hope that phony stuff doesn't come right off, but it probably will. Anyway, next is twenty twenty one dash one forty five, and that is awarding a contract to Shade Environment for asbestos. Abatement at one oh one North Cornwall Avenue Boiler Room, not to exceed forty one fifty. And based on the address, I'm assuming that our public works, correct?
It is, that is correct, Mayor, yes.
Okay. Next is resolution twenty twenty one dash one forty six. And that's authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the communications operator. Teamsters Local nine twenty one current collective bargaining agreement. It's, it's to uh allow a um employee to go to step two due to the certifications the employee has. So um the wording in the contract wouldn't allow this employee to do that. But we're doing an amendment because the employee deserves it because. That person has the certifications needed. Anybody have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, next is twenty twenty one dash one forty seven. That's authorizing seasonal part-time employment for the city of Vettner. For the Department of Public Works, this is for our beach cleanup crew, our recreational aids and our pier staffing.
That's correct, and Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, we might be adding one more summer, um like lawn maintenance guy.
I would say uh there, there's gonna be additional seasonal help. We have, we have the younger high school students that we typically hire for the beach cleanup. And yes, we would um look to have uh an older nineteen-year-old for to help us with the field and the lawn.
Great.
Peter, um masters if if you will. We brought back Seamus Manley and and Dan Zemelto. Dan's been there a long time, he's, he kind of manages the crew for us. Well, Seamus was started last year with us. And then we're bringing on James Arntz and Lou Jean Susan. I'm gonna struggle with that last name, Truffiger? Give it a shot. Um because we're extending the hours that someone's gonna be out there to the evenings. Starting on Friday, Saturday and Sunday nights, we're gonna have someone out there till till midnight. Maintaining the place, make sure the rules are being followed, um and kind of keeping an eye on things. We needed, needed an extra person. So that's why we have four this year.
Good, we'll be covered. Next, resolution twenty twenty one dash one forty eight, that's appointing James, I think it's Quinlin, to the Vettner City School Board.
Yes, Maria, before we get to that, you had something to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention to the mayor commissioners, we're, we're trying to put these on the agenda as they're coming on. So you will have others that come on later in the season that will hopefully get to you before they start.
Great, thank you. Next is twenty twenty one dash one forty nine, and that is uh we are accepting the retirement of Richard Spivey.
Mayor, if we could go back to to our board of ed appointment?
Sure.
Jim Quinlin, real, real quick, um you know, we certainly are are still sorry to, for our loss with with Joe McDevitt. But uh we did a pretty extensive interview process. Um I know I met with uh four or five candidates, really strong candidates, unbelievably strong candidates this year. Uh for this, for this volunteer position. Um and and Jim comes to us as a new resident. Um Jim is is very active in our advisory committee. And expect, expressed an interest in jumping on to uh the school board. Uh he's an attorney by trade and um we certainly welcome him to our community and and welcome him to uh our board of ed. I think he will give them some, some good direction and and be an asset to that, that body. Just wanna say a couple things, so.
Thank you. Uh the next is uh twenty twenty one dash one fifty, and that's authorizing Jennifer Zubba. To learn and to gain valuable insight and experience as an intern in the city of Vettner. This is one day a week, no pay, working in the fire department, uh basically under with OEM. Next is twenty twenty one dash one fifty one, that's authorizing support from the local governing body. Authorizing the fiscal year twenty twenty one local recreational improvement grant. And after reading the backup, basically this, and uh if we get this, it allows us to spend money on improving um. Uh any of our uh recreation facilities or areas from playgrounds, which of course we don't need because we. Spend a pretty penny fixing them, but I'm sure there's other areas that we would um, we could use fixing up, so. Anything on that, gentlemen?
Just that that we have some opportunity to to look for some funding for, you know, we we talked about Vettner West, we've talked about Ski Beach. Um things along those lines, so it's, you know, anytime we can get grant money, we're we're gonna get our name up there and and make the application.
Right, okay. Next is twenty twenty one dash one fifty two, and this is uh uh authorizing the appointment of a deputy city clerk. A deputy registrar, this is filling a vacancy that we had in our clerk office, this is not an additional position. Next is twenty twenty one dash one fifty three, and this is. Authorizing full-time employment to uh Amy Stouffer for Vettner City Finance Department as assistant comptroller. I'm gonna give a little color on this, Nynette did a wonderful article, but for anybody out there in the public who did not read the article. Or any of the city employees that uh have issued to it, so. Um as a finance person, um working for the county for thirty-two years, it took me probably twenty years. Turn a bookkeeping department into a true finance department. There's only one way to do that, you have to have accountants. You need to have people that are of an accounting background, whether it's an edu- formal education or years of experience. Not saying you need a college degree, I'm saying you either need that or many years' experience. And um what I did there over years with my assistants is as clerical staff left, we brought on accountants. So this year, we had two employ- we had two vacancies in the finance department. We advertised for a, an accountant, a senior accountant and a principal accountant. We did that because there are three different levels under the civil service guidelines. Based on what we got in applications or people that we would be able to interview and pick. And offer a position that is equal to the person's experience. Uh based on uh an average salary, two people would have been fifty thousand each, um low um. Gaming, uh fringe benefit rates are, I did a sixty-two percent, it's probably more like sixty-four percent. So if you do a sixty-two percent hiring two people would have cost the city a hundred and sixty-two thousand salary and fringe benefits. Amy Stouffer is the assistant comptroller at the county, twenty-two years of county government, treasure office experience. She has experience in bonding, investing, revenues. Uh general ledger, closing out the book, year end, month end. The county tried to hold on to her after we offered her the position. With getting Amy, we combined the two positions and we are hiring her, the salary stated in the backup. By doing that, we saved the city seventy thousand dollars. So anyone who has issued to bring in an employee on at a certain salary, they need to understand. It may be that person's first day walking in Vettner City Hall, but the person has twenty-two years of county finance. Not municipal, that means she deals with twenty-three municipalities. And a much, much huger budget than our little city, our great city. So, Nynette wrote a beautiful article, we started our process of enhancing our finance department two years ago. With the pleasure of bringing on Al Stanley, who has done an absolutely phenomenal job. He has also taken an employee in our finance department under his wing, and he is mentoring that individual. Who is now going to school for certain classes, and she will be another strong finance person. Bringing on Amy, you have three. Finance department is the backbone of any organization. The accountants are the first to be hired for a business and they're the last to be fired if a business closes. Amy is also certified as a county CFO. So, we are getting a asset. It will be wonderful to have her with Al. I also feel for the fut- look for, look into the future, I am not gonna be here forever. And I wanna make sure that our city and our taxpayers are protected, and I want our finance office to be. Very protected and having one person um knowing all. It puts the city in a very vulnerable position, so this is a win-win for. Us, but not the county. It's a great loss to them, like I said, they tried to. Counteroffer and keep her, and she is coming to that. So I just thought I'd give a little color on that because people just see name and dollar and they all have so much to say. And now you know, so hiring her, we saved seventy thousand dollars and we got a diamond. Anybody else have anything to say on that one?
I think it's a good hire, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next is twenty twenty one dash one fifty seven, and that's transferring Leonard Tibet from parking violations to officer. To public safety to tel- telecommunication training. It's a very nice gentleman, I like to see that. Next is twenty twenty one dash one fifty five, it's approving a title change for Sue Van Dyne as arts director. Well overdue, Sue does a phenomenal job, she goes above and beyond, she is at any function we have. Um donating her time, she is an arts director, not what her past title was, some coordinator. She is, not only her ability is so. She's just amazing what she can do. Um I mean, the great, one of the greatest things was when she did the mug. One of my Christmas gifts and said it's a, it's a heights thing with the bridge up, I mean, and then people went crazy when I put it on my Facebook two Christmases ago. But Sue Van Dyne is a, i- is is an incredible human being, a wonderful employee. And to give her this title, I think it's long overdue. Commissioners, anybody have anything to say about that?
No, Sue's a great asset to our community, um does a great job with our art program and. Um you don't see me there because I don't have an artistic bone in my body. I like looking at what she does over there.
Yeah, she does, yeah, she's, she's amazing. I, I'm not artistic either, I just like numbers. Next is twenty twenty one dash one fifty six, and this is authorizing a contract to Park Mobile. Um the National Cooperative uh Purchasing Alliance, I've got a big question mark. I don't know, is Al Murray, if somebody wants to give me a quick snippet, I don't know if the commissioners are in tune. I read it, I read it a few times and I was still a little fuzzy on it. So if somebody can give me a little color for this, or Chief Biagi, I don't know who was involved in all this.
So Jim Pakanaski took the lead on this, and um this allows, will allow um remote. Access to parking meters to purchase more time, whether you're sitting on the beach or in a restaurant. Um or anywhere in the city and to identify a spot, and it not only works with the meters but works with the kiosks.
So you can, so you could be, so you could put money in a meter and be. From in North Beach and end up being down the south end, and you can automatically put more on your meter.
Fine, yeah, uh you're not at the physically, but you're paying for it from your location.
That's what I'm saying, exactly, okay.
These are in place in Atlantic City and Cape May and all over, and uh Belmar has actually gone completely electronic. And saw an increase in their revenues as well as a decrease in their service for the physical meters. So they gave us a presentation today, it was very impressive, very comprehensive. And very easy to use, you can have it set up on your phone in a matter of minutes and uh and feed the meter, so to speak, electronically. Very quickly and um and it, it would probably add some spaces to our overall. Uh inventory as well, without having to add physical meters.
I think I saw this up in uh Ridgewood in North Jersey um last summer, so thank you, Jim, for spearheading it. Okay, the next resolution is twenty twenty one dash one fifty seven. And that's authorizing us to close the boat ramp and authorizing no parking at Ski Beach from Friday, June eleventh to Monday, June thirteenth. For the paddle for a cause event, we okay with that?
Yep.
Yeah, the next. Excuse me?
Good to have it back.
Yes, for sure. Uh the next thing we will be.
Hello, I'm sorry, hi, I'm Andrea Adams Hughes with the Dean Randazzo Cancer Foundation. Good evening, I didn't know if I needed to be on, I know you guys just uh authorized, thank you so much. Um do you need me to speak about anything? We wanted to.
Right now, not right now, thank you so much, but not right now.
Okay, thank you.
But you're welcome to stay on, but we're good, thank you. Um then, then we will have approval of bills and payroll, and now we are at our discussion items part of our. Um agenda, so the first is a revocable license, one oh six South Bu- Buffalo Avenue. And I assume that Ed Stinson is gonna talk to us about this?
Yes.
Okay. Uh yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh we received the application. Um the, the applicant went to the planning board, uh received. Approval for a small addition to the property during that process. Uh the planning board engineer, I believe, recognized that on the property existed a. A landscape wall that encroached into the right of way of Buffalo. And um the planning board made a condition of their approval. That the applicant applied for this license. Uh in, in his application. Um the applicant, Mr. Bernato, notes that the wall has existed since prior to his purchase of the property. Which is sometime, I believe, around two thousand and five. Uh I went out to the site. Um the wall does encroach into uh the, the right of way, however, does not block the sidewalk. Uh and it is very similar to uh adjacent uh neighboring property. So my recommendation is for several reasons, one, because it's been there so long and prior to his ownership. And because it does not block the sidewalk, uh that commissioners uh consider it to be a hardship and and. Grant the uh revocable license.
So your recommendation is to grant it?
That was a long way of saying that, yes, Mayor.
Okay, no, that's fine, I just, okay, that's fine.
I would agree with that, I, I've been to the, I've also looked at the site. It's, and and we've actually talked with Jimmy Agassino and and Ed and myself about. Amending our rules on that, where it's a landscape feature like that, that would not need such a revocable license. Um limited to a certain elevation, um but something like that, we're working on that to amend.
Okay, hold on. Sorry, I need to drink water. The next uh discussion item is.
Hammer's not working.
Oh, we're done. Okay, the next is repairing issue?
That news again, Tim?
Yeah, Jim, do you have the pictures from the last time we did this, the uh the exhibits?
Uh I'm gonna have to find it again, I don't have it off the top of my head.
How long will that take? You think you can put it right up?
It's gonna take a couple minutes, I gotta remember where I put it, um but give me a couple minutes if you wanna talk about the next item.
Yep, all right, we'll jump to the next. The next discussion item was, is dates for outside dining and expanding use of sidewalk area for tables. So m- my suggestion for outside dining would be May fifteenth. To October fifteenth, if it's warm enough, that's just out of my head. Um I think we need to expand use of sidewalks. Um I know last year we did it because of Covid, we allowed a lot more. Um but I think, just talking to people, I think the. The restaurants in the city, the whole image of the city changed last year, it brought a whole different look and life to the city. I think a lot of people like to eat outside, I guess they like to sweat, I don't know. Um I prefer air conditioning, but. I, I think, I think it's not just, does not just benefit the uh, the owners of the restaurants, but I think. I I think I think it's not just does not just benefit the uh the owners of the restaurants, but I think it gives the people that live here and the visitors and even people that are coming from one town to another. It gives an opportunity to dine outside. And I think all our restaurants did a nice job with plants and umbrellas and tables and yada, yada, yada. So that's all I have to say on that one.
What specifically are we expanding? Not because you still have to have thirty-six inches for handicap walkways, correct?
I didn't, I didn't get into that. It just, I just have written in front of me dates for outside dining and expanding use of sidewalk area for tables. That's all that's written in front of me. I didn't get into the technical piece.
One of the the resolution that was that we passed last year got very specific on on four sites. Three of those being on Ventnor Avenue. That that became kind of a debacle with the county last year. Um, at the end, it seemed to work its way out. Um, we'd have to talk to the county again to make sure we're all on the same page to, and this would be the expansion into the right of way of Ventnor Avenue. Is that section, as we all know, of Ventnor Avenue is is a county roadway from Dorset down into Margate. Are we are we looking to do those those very same similar bump outs that we allowed last year where, you know, I think Santucci's did it? I think La Padea did it for a little while, but their their plan did not pass muster with the county and had to come down. That's why I think we're talking about this. I don't, there's nothing being passed here. This is, this is discussions for tonight, right?
Right.
So it's not the sidewalk, it's the right of way, it's the parking places?
That that's what the resolution that was attached to the the thing. I think so. When we talk about the sidewalks, you know, for for years, resident or business owners or restaurants have been using them sparingly. Last year they kind of had to, so you saw a lot more use of it. One of the things I talked about at our last or a couple of meetings ago, I'll say, is that we should put in place a a temporary license requirement for this, not to to hit these guys up for for dollars, but to protect the city. Um, we need whole harmless agreements from these these restaurants. Uh, they're using public right of way to to have their guests sit at. Um, they should be, you know, providing us with a sketch of that. They should be providing us a whole harmless or insurance agreements. That their insurance that they have insurance on the property and a whole harmless agreement for us. That goes with all sidewalk usage for restaurants or others. If they want to put something out there, they have to come to us to do that. We may not have enough time to do all that for this summer, but it's something I definitely want to put in place. I think this what what this was put on for was, you know, talks about Monmouth Avenue and then the the other three sites on Ventnor Avenue. Um, I haven't reached out to any of the Ventnor Avenue places to see if they wanted to do that again. But I know, I know uh Red Room does on Monmouth. And I know we've had some some concerns raised on that. So that's where I think this discussion was going to go, or is that not my?
No, that that's not going now.
Okay.
That's, yeah.
I I guess then then this was for, you know, are we, should we do a permit requirement, not an expensive permit? And and I don't want to do what Atlantic City does. They they charge you a hundred dollars a square foot. I want a flat fee. And I want whole harmless and insurance provided to the city to protect us.
I think the home harmless is is something that we should have. That 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 even more than a permit. Because I think that would be, that becomes a bigger issue.
The the permit process is how you get to the whole harmless, so I think.
Okay, gotcha.
That was in place. I thought they had that last year. We did that last year for anybody that was extending their sidewalk. We made them do a uh a whole harmless. We did that. But it's not part of our procedure. I if I, I think that if that's what we want to do, I think we just put that together last year to cover ourselves with what was happening. Maybe something we need to visit if we were going to do that. And the other thing is that um I don't believe that the county will allow Atlantic Ventnor Avenue to be used at all in any way this year. From what we were told last year after it was done with Santucci.
Chief, af- after that conversation that we had, that phone call that we had. I had a better conversation about a month later with one of the the attorneys for the county, Anthony Pagano.
Okay.
That it was a much, much more acceptable um, aspect. They actually, they ended up purchasing or or giving Santucci's a tax credit for for giving them those barricades. They wanted
That that's nice. So I'm glad to hear there was a happy ending there. I just want to make sure we're following the county rules because it it kind of was blurred last year, the lines. Whether it was county health, it was going to report people and then it ended up falling on the police department all the time. And then we became uh, cl- chairs are too close, police and everything else. So I just want to kind of make a, have a clear line drawn, so my guys know where they can and can't go and what to do.
I I think we we reach out to these three restaurants or or maybe we re- I called every one of them last year. I I called every restaurant in the city and spoke to the owners and the ones that wanted to do it were the ones that are on here. Um, I can do that again and see if there's any interest. Um, if there is, then they'll have to go through a process and I I would like to create that that call it a permit, but I guess it is a permit process that kind of officially puts it out there like this is what you need to do. And then you have a whole harmless and you have that going for it, so.
Well, we talked about having a uh reaching out to them with a with a letter first, you know, to to that would include some of the FAQs and the and and whether they would um be interested or not. And then I I agree, I think a whole harmless and a permit. And then you and a drawing that would allow us to address each restaurant on a case by case basis.
Yep, that's what I'm looking for.
So I I think it would also act as sort of a reminder to those restaurants that even if they that they they have to check, they have to, they have to follow some basic common sense guidelines.
Yeah, I I would really appreciate that this year, even, you know, the yardstick rule, you know, for for passage. Uh, the officers, my guys, were putting in really awkward positions last year. And I think we just need to maybe rein it in a little bit, let them know ahead of time. I think a a fact sheet would be great. What you can and can't do and what we expect of them would be really good. We did it with our ice cream vendors. It worked for them. We haven't had issues with that during the summer. I think it's a smart move to start doing it with our merchants that have restaurants and plan to use the sidewalk.
Maria, could you and Lisa get together on a letter that we can send out to them and then and say, look, we're we're, you're gonna have to, if you're gonna do this, you need, maybe we don't do the permitting this year, maybe we set it up for future. But let's, let's at least show us some whole harmless agreement and insurance on those areas.
Yeah, it only makes sense that we, um. Okay.
Um, excuse me, I think you have two things to consider later and which might be part of the discussion later. Uh, and in addition to what we're talking about now with with sidewalks and the roadways, you also have to make a decision, I believe, on just outside dining, the period of time.
I think Beth Beth mentioned that from May fifteenth to
I think it should be May fifteenth, October fifteenth.
I agree with that.
Which is
We're also at
From the road and side.
That will be global throughout the city.
Right.
So so there's been people sitting outside at Agnes's for breakfast and why why would we limit? If if they're I I know Isabel was on a nice day. People are sitting outside at lunch.
Right.
If they want to sit outside and and
Yeah, I think we're blurring two subjects, though.
Exactly, yeah.
I I think, yeah, okay, I know exactly where you're, okay, I understand. So I think outside dining is one thing. We do need to figure out, just make sure they know that seating and passage through the right of way, the throughway, and I think that's one thing. And then the rest we can talk about later.
It 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 you can't really, it 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 doesn't seem logical to inhibit some a business from having outside dining on a good day and in an early, in a late spring, right?
I I I think they should do it whenever, whenever the weather allows them to do it.
They're within the the safety.
I don't think anybody's disagreeing. I said, I think we're blurring a couple of things.
Yeah.
This is it. Excuse me, can I, am I in this meeting? Not yet, sir.
That's Jimmy.
All right. The only thing I, the only thing I could say is the ordinance we have in place doesn't work. We we don't allow tables along the curb. There there is a limited space in front of these stores. Either put the walk space where the parking is and let them take up the whole sidewalk. But like the chief said with PD, they Hannah G's has been blocking that whole sidewalk for years. Either they can or they can't. You you just it's an impossible situation. They don't have room for two deep tables. Our ordinance says they must be up against the building. You can't be on the curb. It doesn't work. Either, to me, it's a beautiful thing. Let them block the whole sidewalk. Remove a parking spot or two where where somebody can walk. Put the barriers there where the walk space is in the street. If if that's allowed, but to continue either turn your head or put something in place that's feasible for everybody. But no, everybody's sidewalk is so narrow. Isabel's, I mean, everyone you go to. To, you would have to bob and weave through the tables at the curb and against
That's why we want to put a permit. We go, we're going to amend our ordinance. We're going to put a permit process in place that requires a sketch of where the tables are going to go. That way, when
But it's not feasible, it's not feasible for the restaurants. If we if we did that, they get half as many seating as they are with pushing the limits.
Right.
You're gonna get PJ, we're gonna give PJ a copy of a plan that nobody's gonna follow. It doesn't behoove them.
Following some rules. So we're we're willing to help our businesses. But they're going to, let me finish. They're going to have to follow the rules. This is not the Wild West. Last year was an anomaly. We're going to put some rules in place. And if if they can't make it work, then they don't put the tables out there. Simple as that.
It is. It really is that. And the some, and this is why we're being proactive by sending them out a letter so they know we're we're not hiding anything. And I also think that the other difference between this year and last year is that we're at fifty percent this year, right? We're not
It doesn't matter. They like the outside. They got used to the outside. Chief Biaggi, can you back me up on this?
I I think we all agree that, and Jimmy, you said it before too, and it's a great idea. Um, if we're gonna give them the sidewalk, give them the sidewalk, but then make them responsible to make a a uh an area in front of their place with with barricades or whatever for the people to walk. I mean, at least we've got to do something because no ordinance or weak ordinance or an ordinance that we're using that has no bite does us no good. So really, it's when we go out there, they're doing something that they're not supposed to be doing because of ordinance already. We can fix it with an ordinance, the way we want it to be fixed, set the tone and get everybody involved in what would be best. So that's really the thing we should do.
I got it. I gotta take a step back here. Because last summer, when we had issues at uh, you know, up in North Beach, we've got an entire block on the ocean side there. I don't want to name restaurants, but everybody knows who I'm talking about. There was four restaurants there. They all had tables outside the entire block. It was difficult to walk down there. I made a suggestion to let them do that, take away the four parking spaces that were there and make a walkway through there. And I got shut down on that. Now I'm just hearing that same idea come up again.
Well, you're gonna see as we as we do learn and we see, listen, if you ask us in the beginning of the summer, we say one thing. By the end of the summer, we're going to tell you what we observed and find a better way. It's just human nature. So if we don't address it, then we're just, then we we laugh at each other. But we're looking to address it now. We know there's a problem. We know we're going to be busy as hell this summer. We've got to address this because we're not going to be able to please everybody, but we have zero ordinance to support it, one way or the other. So now it's really just a handshake and a nod, and let's hope it works out and mediate it if somebody on either side has a problem with it.
Let's let's do this. Let's let's come up with a draft ordinance that sets parameters, sets up a permitting process with a plan. And like we talked about, the insurance and the whole harmless stuff. So let's, let's do that rather quickly so we can hopefully pass it in in maybe end of May, early June, and then get everybody on the same page.
In the meantime, we just, as long as people are passing by, it's the crowds are not busy. We let the restaurants do their thing and
Right.
We deal with it as we've done in the past. A good ordinance would really go a long way. And we've discussed this. We're trying to codify it now and get rid of stuff we don't use anymore and make more progressive um, ordinances that actually do something and mean something. So I think this is a step in the right direction, and I totally agree with Jimmy.
I kind of like the idea that if they did in that drawing in this new permit had a walkway, um, and they were willing to give up a parking place in front of their establishment, I I think it's something we can work around. I I I don't see a problem with that.
Yeah, but like, let's all remember what Lance said at the beginning. Uh, if it's a, if it's Ventnor Avenue and it's the portion that the county owns. Then they gotta go the the uh
Barrier there.
That's why the the one size fits all, it just doesn't do, you gotta go piece by piece.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. All right, um, so I guess we're done with that one. And did Jim, did you find the sketch?
Yes, I have them.
Okay, so I guess Tim McGuire, you want the sketch up for us to see?
Is this what you're looking for, Tim?
Do you have the other one with the blue highlighting? There you go. All right, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay. So when I had my uh original discussions with Scott Abbott, who represents the property. Uh, see the little triangular piece there? Where the letters end seventy degrees, forty-seven feet, thirty-five inches east?
Yes.
Ninety six. That triangular piece is what I thought he wanted to purchase from the city. In subsequent conversations, he indicated that he is going to apply to the state for what's known as a statement of no interest. Basically indicating the state owns that land. And that if they give him a statement of no interest, that pretty much ends it uh, as far as any type of acquisition. What he wanted to do was purchase the land in the blue. Uh, which is Waterwood of the Bulkhead underwater. And my thought, once I heard that, was I don't, why don't we just give him permission? Uh, our consent to the state to put in the new bulkhead and not make any type of sales.
So, Tim, when you say that it's beyond the bulkhead, the that what's shown there is vinyl bulkhead.
No, I apologize. So I guess that is actually a port of the street end.
Right.
Of Derby.
Yes.
So
I I have, I have, and from our last conversation, I have no issue with with whether we hundred-year lease to them or whatever with that piece out there. Where I don't want to be giving up is is actually in the physical improvements. Jim, if you can pan down just a little bit within Derby Avenue. I don't want to be giving that to anybody. And that's what they had asked for the last time, didn't he? He wanted something out where it
But he knows we're not going to do that.
Yeah, there's no way. We we need maintenance there. There's too much, there's stormwater going through there. Not something I'd be interested in.
So you
But I I don't necessarily have an issue of of that blue area. You know, agreement that they can use it, whatever you want to, whatever you want to call that document. You know, the same thing we do with right of way access, the the restricted easement or revocable easement.
Anybody walk down there to see what he's talking about, though? Like a a license, a revocable license, yeah.
Yes.
I think that's more appropriate.
Yeah, that that's what I would think we should be doing.
Okay.
Everybody good with that?
Mayor, you good with that?
I'm going back to the beginning when you talked about that triangle piece.
Yeah, can you scroll down or up?
It's, yeah, you said that originally thought that Scott wanted to purchase that from us, but he's gone to the state. So I get stupid question. Who owns it? Is it the state or is it us?
Well, if you see that dashed line, that's the old line, I guess. And the state owns everything waterward of that.
Okay.
When I first saw it, I thought we owned that portion, but we we don't.
Okay.
All right.
Yep, I got it. Thanks.
Okay.
So we're good.
And and no objection to giving him the permission to go ahead and do the bulkhead?
Correct. I'm good with that, too.
He he would need, he would need applicator, he would need to complete an application that would have the city's consent for 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 that bulkhead, the portion of the bulkhead that is in the right of way extended, but. But I I get from uh, mayor and commissioners, I don't think that's. I don't think they would object to it, but I think maybe in the same process, we talk about that revocable license. Um, you know, just so to so we're protected.
Agreed.
And also, and 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 there's a stipulation that nothing gets built on that as well, right? If you're not going to.
But if it's a, if it's a revocable license, I think you're covered in in that process because they wouldn't be able to get a permit to build anything there. Um, but yes, I agree.
Okay. All right, so we're done with discussion.
Excuse me, are they going to have CAFRA? Uh, permit for that? And also they would need a zoning and flood, not that there'd be any cost to it, so we could uh. Check the elevation of it, the minimum and maximum on it.
And they'd have to make the proper applications for everything, just like they would on any bulkhead.
Jimmy, I I have an application of the permit. I'll send that to you. A copy of the permit. I'm sorry, I'll send that to you. But yes, I agree.
All right. Are we, are we done with the discussion items, gentlemen?
Believe so.
Okay. The next part of our meeting is the public portion. This is open to anyone out there in the public. If you'd like to speak on anything that we discuss. Thus far, because what we discussed is what we will be voting on. In our regular portion immediately following. The workshop. So Jim, is there any, uh, do I have a motion to open to the public?
No moves.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Please all, I mean, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Jim?
Anybody from the public wishes to speak on any of the items that have been discussed or to be voted on tonight? Please make yourself known within Zoom by raising your hand or within the chat feature, and you will be recognized. Once you're recognized, you may turn your camera on while you're speaking.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, can you please state your name and address?
Sure. Hi, it's Maria Gada from the Red Room Cafe.
I'm Maria.
Hi, how's everyone doing?
Everyone's good.
Good, good. So um, just having a question about. The permits. Going forward about the walkway and the street. And has anything come up about us getting a tent for Monmouth once again this summer?
Right, that's, you know, Maria, it's it's specific to just you, so this is not the appropriate time. We can.
Okay.
We can get back to you on that.
Sure, and if if someone wants to give me a call, like Lance had said, he reached out. Last year, and he spoke to us, that would be awesome if he could do that, or someone.
And I think the the discussion that we had with the permits and um. Or right before we opened to the public. Like Lance said, that we would, that information will get out to you to you, um, to all the restaurants soon.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, great, and.
In in the meantime, you can get your crowns and paper out and do a drawing for us.
Right, gotcha.
All right, sweetie.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Maria. Anyone else, Jim?
Uh, Andrea. You'd like to unmute yourself and um, turn your camera on, you can speak.
Hi, good evening.
You just remuted yourself, Andrea.
I. It's not letting me initiate the video, but uh. Can you see me? Hi, um, so uh, I'm Andrea Adams Hughes. I'm the Vice President of the Dean Randazzo Cancer Foundation. Um, thank you very much for granting permission for um, closing of the ramp at Ski Beach. For the dates requested. Um, we were hoping that the city would also allow us permissions. Um, we were granted um, the waiving of funds with the exception of of fees. With the exception of police um, for the for the twelfth, for that date. Um, when we were hoping two years, you know, for last year, which obviously did not happen. Um, and we were hoping that the city would still be able to honor that for us this year as we are a five oh one C three. Um, and totally not for profit. Um, so we are asking permission for that.
I think that's coming up on a subsequent agenda. Is that correct, Maria?
Yes.
That that'll be, I think that's our next meeting in May, correct?
Yes.
Okay. We had to do this to to get the the parking and the and the Ski Beach part of it closed down. The actual approval will be next month.
Okay, so um. And there was also, I believe, question. I I did speak uh, with Donna this afternoon um, in regards to. Request for permit for um. Serving liquor. Um, Lou Friedman from Boca will be providing uh. Will be serving alcohol there with permission and requesting the appropriate permitting. Um, through his attorney, Scott Silver. So I confirmed that information today and wanted to communicate that. To all of you as well. So the proper.
What you have to do is you have to give a little narrative. Concerning what vendors will be there, where they'll be located. Who will be serving the alcohol and where the alcohol will be served.
Okay.
When I say vendors, I mean all vendors, not just alcohol vendor.
That's fine. So for the for the next meeting, would you, you would like, we should do a floor plan and submit. Where we're having the, you know, beer garden area that'll be fenced off to keep out minors and to make sure everybody is of age. And all of those things. It's that. What we.
If you can do that before the next meeting, in other words, get that to the city clerk by next week. Because I'm reviewing the contract and I want to make sure the contract conforms with what is actually going to happen out there.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
We appreciate it. Take care.
Just to get a little preliminary info to to make sure you wanted to go ahead with this, perhaps without all the details yet. So um, that's what tonight's goal was, including the the sale of alcohol.
Yeah, I I haven't seen anything on it yet or with the. But I'd like to see the. The application.
Coming for something like that. I would like to have seen that earlier to to drop that on us. From them, I'm a little late.
But we'd like to see the full application. If she's still on, that's the what's special events at is.
We gotta check the ABC license. We get, there's a lot of things we gotta do with this.
Yeah.
Right.
My understanding was, I think they thought the um, approval last year was would suffice for this year. So um, there were a couple of hiccups. So we were trying to get this.
Okay.
In, you know, at least on your plate a little bit, and then all the details next meeting.
Okay. Sounds good. Jim, is there anybody else out in the public?
Well, let's call. Is anybody else from Public Works to speak on any of the items that are being voted on? Please use Zoom raising hand feature or within the chat feature, and you'll be recognized and allowed to turn your camera on. I do not see anyone else.
Okay, do I have a motion to close public portion?
Motion to close.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa roll call, please. Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, do I have a motion to close the workshop portion of the meeting and open up our regular meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve minutes of March twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, regular meeting as well as March twenty fifth, twenty twenty one executive meeting?
Motion to approve minutes from both regular and executive meetings on March twenty fifth, from March twenty fifth, excuse me.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa roll call, please.
Akribel?
Yes.
Mr. Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes, we do not have any ordinances. We do not have any public hearings or adoptions of ordinances. So the next is resolutions by consent. Do I have a motion to adopt resolutions twenty twenty one dash one thirty four? Omitting one thirty six to twenty twenty one dash one fifty seven.
Moved to adopt resolutions by content consent, twenty twenty one, one three four to one five seven, omitting. One three six, bless you.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa roll call, please.
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Mr. Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Next, uh, Al, our CFO, can you please give us our bills and payrolls for this period?
Yes, for this period, uh, the bill list is two million, three hundred thousand, one hundred sixty seven dollars and forty eight cents. And the payroll for this period is five hundred and sixty three thousand, six hundred and seventy two dollars and fourteen cents.
Thank you. Commissioner, do I, Commissioner, do I have a motion to approve bills and payroll stated from our CFO?
The moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa roll call, please.
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Mr. Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Do we have any announcements or safety reports tonight? No. Do we have any commissioner comments or reports?
I have a couple of updates if I can, Mayor.
Yeah, sure. I'm taking the fifth right now. Go for it.
Um, first Happy Earth Day, and it's the the background I have on my thing today.
Um, I can't figure out how to get a background.
So just a couple of updates, and Ed can correct me if I'm wrong on on a couple of projects. Um, Kingsley Drive is almost finished. We got about another week, maybe two weeks at most. Um, concrete work, the flat work is done. Um, it's been milled, and I think the base is down, so we'll be finishing that up the next couple of weeks. Um, Wellington Avenue Lafayette End out by past the school, that's been finished for a little while. Dorset Avenue from Wellington to Ski Beach, uh, that work has just started. Uh, we're working on the curbs and and side and sidewalk in that, Ed.
At the at the excess, at the corner ramps.
Right, handicap ramps, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Um, there was some comments, we, people reached out, I think to the mayor with regard to a porta potty that was out at Ski Beach. Contractor under our contracts are required to have that. We felt that was a good spot to put it. Better than having it on the road in someone's front yard. So that's why that that um.
Commissioner, that that was actually relocated on to.
Right.
Okay.
Dumpster.
On somebody's house.
Well, by the dumpsters on the, by by Waterview. So it's not in front of. Necessarily residential property. It's in front of the the dumpsters.
Please, some of the people, some of the time, but not all the people.
Understand.
Um, we have some projects coming up. Uh, we'll be bidding out Richards Avenue and Troy Avenue. We need some major gutter replacements on those streets. Um, so that those projects will be going forward. Uh, in the near future, as well as some gutter projects out in the Heights, uh, nine hundred uh. North Harvard Avenue and three hundred Cambridge, it looks like. Uh, we're going to be doing some projects out there. So. Some other stuff in the works that has to go to engineering, but we're we're moving through um, some projects as the weather breaks. We can do some of these, this concrete work, so.
Great.
Um, one other comment, Maria, you know.
Yeah, I'm here.
When our daily walks with with the canine boss of our family. Um, there's a couple of meters missing over on Marsden. Um, between Cambridge and Cornwall. Couple meters there that are, the heads are missing. I'm not sure.
That's one of the areas where we're going to be placing the new M five meters.
Okay, good.
So maybe that we're in the process of of that change out.
All right, good. All right, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner Kribel.
Thank you. Commissioner Kribel, do you have anything this evening?
Uh, yeah, um, just to stay on parking, I want to thank you both for um, moving forward with that parking. It will be more modern, more efficient. And um, probably more um, easy for to use the parking app. Um. Um, uh, back to the, uh, I have one question for Public Works. There's, I got a call about Suffolk in the beach. There's some debris on the beach. I think it's a staging area for cleanup. The residents on that block called me with some concern. I told them that it was temporary. That.
That is correct, Commissioner. We're, uh, we put the beach rake out today. Um, and uh, the first effort when we, when we get prepared for the summer and for cleaning the beaches. Uh, we rake to remove the uh, the sea grass. Uh, and any of the the larger debris. Our 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 front end loader also has been patrolling the beach every morning, uh, which he does all winter. Um, so the the, for the last two weeks, the larger driftwood. That has has washed up on shore. He has been moving uh, to that location as well. Uh, we're gonna, we're working with the ACU. They're going to bring us a dumpster and we'll go from that spot. With all the debris that we've collected and put it in the dumpster. That probably will happen early next week.
Oh, good. All right, that's fine. They were just concerned because I think there were some kids playing on that sort of.
I understand.
But um, so um, in that same area, I just had two other items. Uh, the pickleball courts, uh, we thought, we talked about. Um, there is going to be uh, the court addition, and I guess that demo, that wall is 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 on the way.
That is correct. Um, I believe. The end of next week, the beginning of the following week, that wall will be, will start coming down.
Great. And and then, and then my last item is more of a discussion. The banner project that I've been working on with the art department. Um, is sold about twenty banners. For the first round. Um, they plan on having a second round. I think there'll be more sales after that. But the idea was floated by, and I would like to get your impressions on this, Mayor and Commissioner. Um, that because we have fifty ba, fifty locations and only twenty banners. Um, the suggestion was to add maybe ten banners that were city related. Um, to sort of fill it out so that we made a good impression on the first time around. So they could easily be ordered. Right now, our share of the revenue would is around fifty six hundred dollars of that. Twenty banners. We could obviously not be charged the the rate, but the cost of the banners would probably be about um. Somewhere between, uh, somewhere around seven hundred and fifty to a thousand dollars. And on those sort of city banners, this idea, you could have, uh, we could have our Facebook page, our events page. Uh, things like our rec department or our arts department could be listed on those banners, and it would just be a way to fill out. So I'm sort of, I'm asking your thoughts, and if you think it's a good idea to spend.
I think one of the banners should have my picture on it.
Oh, that's. Yeah. That's, that's a humble idea. I think that's really, yeah.
I, I'm sorry, it came in my head and I just had to say it.
All right.
That'll be our first vandalized banner too, I'm telling you.
Look at, yeah, we could, you know what? If you get it, you better get like darts too.
We can do artists involved in that.
I think it's a good idea.
All right.
Oh, wait, didn't you guys, I got his auto laugh, didn't I?
I got, you got Nanette to actually um, type, ha, ha, ha.
I know.
That was the only time she's ever responded in these comments, and I think.
Did, did Down Beach? Re buy a banner?
Did Down Beach? Oh, Down Beach ought to buy a banner. That's right.
Uh-oh.
All right. So definitely.
What she wants the banner with my face on it.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe. All right, I like the idea, Tim.
I liked that idea, Tim. I was teasing about my face.
I I have a hundred percent confidence with the art department to come up with some, uh, but we'll, if you guys have any other ideas for departments. Um, I think our Facebook page, our Twitter page, our. Um, those kinds of things are uh, our website, obviously. And we could scatter some rec department, um, idea, some some things like the rec department, uh, like our surf camp on there. Um. Uh, our events on there so that people can have a way to, so good. I'm glad you like the idea. I think it's a, it's a nice way to make a splash. I think that program will grow over time.
Yeah, I like that.
All right.
Good idea.
All right, that's all I got.
All right. Okay, um. Next, we are at the public comment. This is for anybody in the public. If you'd like to speak on anything at this point, just state your name and your address. And we try to limit it to uh, three minutes a person if we have a lot of people. So uh, do I have a motion to open to the public?
Motion open to public.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jim?
Anybody from the public who's to speak on any items, please make yourself known within Zoom by raising your hand. Or within the chat feature, and you'll be recognized. At that time, you may turn your camera on and be seen. I do not see anyone.
All right, do I have a motion to close public portion?
The moved.
Do I have a second?
Second move.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, uh, we do have an executive session this evening. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, I know Nat Net. Um, Tim, what do you want to tell Nanette?
I don't believe, I don't believe we'll be taking any action. I don't believe, I don't believe we'll be taking any action.
Okay. Okay. All right. So, um, do I have a motion to go into an ex, executive session?
So moved. Lisa, you'll.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Jim, would you please explain to the public? Thank you very much for everybody that came out tonight. Stay safe. Jim, will you explain to them that they will now be, um, shut out of the meeting for the executive session?
Anyone?
Anyone from the public will be put into the waiting room if you wish to wait until the end of the executive session. Uh, well, it's just the net and Sue Van Dyne that are left. Actually, it's just Sue Van Dyne and that dropped off as well. So.
So nobody's left.
Nobody's left. And so, um, who will be staying in? Everybody that's on, on will be staying in the executive session.
I texted him. Um, I did text him.
Texted him.
Jimmy A, I know, he got off. Let me see if I can call him.
All right, I, I'm, I can probably cover what we're gonna talk about on that end.
Un, unfortunately Sue does have to log off.
I did. I already put her in the, I put her back into the, actually she logged off and it, there's one person in the waiting room. Any, uh, everybody else is staying on?
Yeah, Lisa has to.
Lisa, after.
Well, let's order something. I'm still in this meeting.
He's angry.
I am. I am. We were supposed to be first, now we're last. Okay?
Lisa?
Yes.
You have to read that resolution.
Yeah, yes. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act permits the discussion of certain matters within executive session. As an exception to met certain provisions of sub-law, the Vetner City Board of Commissioners wishes to discuss certain matters which qualifies exceptions to an executive session. No action bonding upon the Board of Commissioners will be taken within executive session and the discussion conducted in closed session will be disclosed to the public when legally permitted and when the public interest will no longer be served by keeping such matters confidential. Matters to be discussed are matters relating to attorney-client privilege, a tactic or technique utilized in protecting the safety and property of the public and possible ongoing litigation.
That's correct. The protecting the public is concerning whether certain streets could or should be closed. And the ongoing litigation is the tax appeal regarding various, uh, silver living houses in the city.
Okay.
I should. Coming out of executive session, I should indicate for the record, it is seven twenty one. We spoke of two matters. Uh, we were not, we will not be taking formal action on either one of those matters. Uh, one regarded issues relative to ongoing litigation. Uh, it's a tax appeal filed by, uh, what we commonly refer to as Hanson House. The second issue was an issue regarding public safety and attorney-client privilege. Um, and there'll be no action taken on either one of those matters. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Good night.
Night.